Okay, no one up the work session? Will you join us in pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got to ask if Commissioner Albertson is going to be joining us or not.
I don't.
I know he was on the cooperators meeting. All right, additions or deletions?
Um, yes, I have two additions. I have a proclamation for pretrial probation and parole supervision week and the fourth amendment OHA agreement number one six six zero four six. I blended in your guys' packet, but I forgot your name again.
Okay. Um, all right. First up, our timed item, Daphne Greer, uh, Youth Mentor Program. Good morning, Daphne.
Good morning. I am just here on behalf of the mentor program this year to request five thousand in funding from the county. Um, we were here last year, um, in the middle of the COVID and we're kind of, we're doing a lot better right now. We, I'll go over a brief bit of our funding. Um, we're currently being founded or funded by the Miller Foundation. We just received a fifteen thousand dollar grant from them and the juvenile crime prevention dollars, um, as well as the Silver Family Foundation and the town. And we have raised fifteen thousand dollars in sponsors from here in the community, which has been very, a very big blessing. Um, we weren't able to build our annual fundraiser again for the last two years due to COVID. So we're hoping to get that back on track in February now that the restrictions have been lifted. And presently, we have, um, twenty one kids in our one-on-one mentoring program. During COVID, it went down to ten, so we really worked hard to rebuild that. And we have seventeen kids active and four that are waiting to be matched with mentors. So we are in need of more mentors, male and female. If anybody knows anybody that would be interested. We have our four main programs, our one-on-one mentors, and we also host monthly activities for them, to kind of give them a break from running activities on their own. So we've been really active in doing that. In our team mentoring, we did at the schools from January through May, and we averaged about thirteen kids from third through sixth grade, um, a month. So it was actually a really good turnout and very successful this year. Uh, we also have our Girl Talk program, which we are aiming to start in October for fifth and sixth grade girls. We are working with the school counselors down there at the hay school, to get that implemented. But it seems to be a really good, um, group of girls that are in need of that. So that's where we're aiming it typically within the high school, but we decided that will not affect it there. And we are also working on getting our peer mentor program back up, which we weren't able to hold last year. So that involves high school students coming down into the elementary schools, having brushes with them, the younger age, and also doing monthly activity with them. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. Um, we also have five employees, part-time. We have one up in Paisley, a wonderful lady that coordinates mentor activities up there. And we're also looking at hiring a part-time in Northlake for very limited hours per month to kind of be a, a go-to person up there. Uh, we have two part-time facilitators here for the Girl Talk program and also another program coordinator we just hired. So we're up in full swing and we're doing pretty well right now. And so we are, are happy to be back on the upswing and, and making lots of progress in recruiting more kids. So we were just wanting to request an additional like out of the county. We were very thankful for that last year and it made a big difference.
I know, I really appreciate all the work that you guys do and I know it makes a huge difference in the community with more kids.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, yeah, so what do you think, Commissioner?
There's a way we can match last year's, uh, I think we should do it.
Okay.
We'll take a look. We obviously recognize the value of the program and the consistency and how you're trying to get things back going again. Appreciate it, uh, getting more countywide too. That's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I see we have Commissioner Albertson has joined us. Um, hey, Mark, how are you? Can you hear us all right?
I can hear you.
All right.
And see.
Okay. Um, so anyway, just, uh, I'm not sure actually when you joined, but we're just, uh, talking about making another contribution to the youth investment, uh, youth, youth mentor program. And Daphne's here kind of giving us an overview. And, uh, we're looking at about five thousand dollar contribution. Um, maybe have it on the next agenda, um, in another couple of weeks for consideration and action. Any thoughts, Mark?
Well, I, as you guys know, I was on the board for a couple of years before I got to be Commissioner and then I got to be too much. So I'm in full support of, of it, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Daphne. Um, all right. Next up, we have, uh, proclamation for pretrial probation and parole supervision week. Be reading this into the record. Mark, do you have a copy, uh, with you as well?
I do.
All right, great. I can read this into the record. I wanted to ask if, uh, you wanted to, uh, if you'd be willing to or, or Commissioner Shulumberger, if either of you wanted to read it into the record. Normally it's the chair, but I wanted to extend it, uh, extend the option to you guys.
I'm sure you'll do a great job.
All right. Man, I almost got it. All right. Um, so Lake County Board Commissioners proclamation. Today is, uh, July twentieth. And, uh, whereas Lake County Community Justice is an essential part of the justice system and whereas the Lake County Community Justice Professionals uphold the law with dignity while recognizing the right of the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity. Whereas Lake County Community Justice Professionals are responsible for supervising adult and juvenile offenders in the community and whereas Lake County Community Justice Professionals are trained professionals who provide services and referrals for offenders and whereas the Lake County Community Justice Professionals work in partnership with the community agencies and groups. And whereas Lake County Community Justice Professionals promote prevention, intervention, and advocacy. And whereas the Lake County Community Justice Professionals provide services, support, and protection for victims. And whereas the Lake County Community Justice Professionals advocate community and restorative justice. And whereas the Lake County Community Justice Professionals are a true force of positive change in their communities. And now therefore be it resolved that we, the Lake County Board Commissioners, do hereby proclaim July eighteenth through the July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one as pretrial probation and parole supervision week and encourage all citizens to honor these community justice professionals and to recognize their achievements. So we have a bunch of you guys here today and I just want to say thank you. And I think the whole Board Commissioners really appreciate all the work that you guys do every day.
Yeah, we know that, uh, there's a lot of countless hours there. It's not just an eight to five job and, uh, you're on call all the time and doing great work out there. We really want to make sure that you're well-recognized throughout the county and, and appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Dude.
All right, well, thank you, guys. I don't want to hold you up.
It's very good proclamation.
Yeah, we will have. There is lunch on Thursday at eleven thirty. Uh, Memorial Hall.
Yes.
And following lunch, what we are, um, coordinating with.
Sounds good. Thank you, Dave. Appreciate you. All right, um, next up is Dave Knowles, uh, personal property, uh, taxes cancellation.
And then we're three of us. What kids, this is mostly just a housekeeping, uh, thing. We do this on a regular basis. Uh, earlier I brought you guys manufactured homes. We're demolished and destroyed. We write those off and come off the roll. This happens to be a personal property, uh, scenario on this particular case. Uh, there's a list of businesses. Honestly, it hasn't, it's the first time we've done personal property in my tenure. So some of these are dating back to quite a ways. I was looking at, uh, uh, there's a, there's a little business called Chocolate Penguin up in the Hunker Mall. That's been a while back. We need to get these cleaned up and off the records. So some of these, that one's dating back to two thousand two. Stop doing anything bad and good happening out there. So, uh, I need your approval to move forward with the section. We've exhausted our resources to try to collect these funds.
So how many properties are personal?
I didn't, uh, the total on this probably around twenty.
So it's seventeen covered. Oh, there's a.
Oh, yeah, that's sixteen, I guess. Anyway.
Seventeen or, is it seventeen or sixteen?
Sixteen.
Oh, it says seventeen here, so.
Okay, well then. Perfect.
Okay, all right. All right, yeah, we can, uh, move on this tomorrow.
Right.
Is there any elements of this that you find are super unique or anything?
No, not well, we're, our collection ratio here at Lake County is superior to a lot of other counties. Small businesses come and go in larger communities often. Somebody opened up a shop, they'll be there going business and go back the next week and their lease is gone, they're packed up and gone, you're stuck. Considering that many counts we have and I've been in office now a long, seven years and this is, uh, a small number considering what we're, what we're.
Right. So, yeah, I guess I don't want to pick out any particular one, but, uh, property in Paisley is a little surprising that it's not covered. So, I don't know what's going on there.
So what that, what it boils down to is not the landlord. It's the, it's the business owner pays the personal property tax and that's so.
It's your pay, I guess.
It's a rented lease property, so you can't go after landlord. You have to go after the business owner.
Okay, yeah, that's what's going on. Okay.
So then on my next item of agenda has to do with the, uh, order of designating the newspaper print.
The publication for closure list.
So in our old world, uh, collections, our strongest collections are for the three percent discount due on November fifteenth. Then we have, uh, sixty and ninety-eight collection points, which is for collect. And actually, this is our, one of our larger, um, pinch points where people pay. They don't want to be in the newspaper. They don't want to have that publicized. And it's, uh, it's a very strong tool in our collection process. It basically takes us from the ninety-five percent collective closer to the ninety-nine percent collective that we run. So a good little shot in the arm and the end.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's the process and that's how it's working fast for success.
Yeah, it's, it, this is a, this happens every year. Your personal property doesn't happen every year, but, uh, the publication does. That's just by statute, so. All right.
Got it.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. All right, Dave.
I remember it was two.
We're whittling away at you guys. So Anne, you want to come up and talk about Pacific Crest bank account change?
Yes, uh, I think interest rates have been on the rise for a little bit of time, but just recently I was, uh, provided a publication from Pacific Crest Credit Union where we have an account and their money market for business accounts, uh, interest rate is a little bit higher than our current, uh, savings account that we're in. Uh, to move to that account, it requires formal action by the board, a motion that shows up in the minutes and then a signed letter. I wish the interest rate was what it was when I first started, but it's not.
Which was what?
Oh my gosh, I think we're getting about three percent on CD there. So this goes from point zero to, to point zero five, um, in a little bit help. It is our policy to keep, uh, funds within any, uh, federal credit union or banking institution within Lake County. So you know it's good business. So we try to get the best interest rate we can at any of those institutions. And this money market account is the best one for Pacific Crest.
Okay.
I appreciate you being, uh, looking out for Lake County being fiscally inserved and trying to save us every penny, right?
Then another goal of mine as far as interest rate returns for the county is, uh, through the state of Oregon, they started in what they call an intermediate pool. A few years ago, I kind of let that build and, and watched it over the years. I think it will be beneficial soon for the county to, um, enter into that arena. When I choose to pull the trigger, there'll be another formal action in this setting to move forward on that. Just provides a little bit more long-term investment opportunity, which may increase a little bit of rate return too, but still very safe.
Okay. Do, do we have a draft letter that you'd like us to sign?
There is a draft letter in the, in the packet. It's really brief and I, so, and I wasn't sure who I would sign it, so I kind of left signature lines completely open.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right.
There it is.
Anything else?
Um, while you're here, uh, I'm going to jump down to guardian, uh, program contribution.
Okay.
Um, perhaps some discussion on maybe just where you think might be an appropriate place to kind of pull some of the funds for that if we were to make a contribution to the guardianship program.
This is for, uh, seniors.
It would have to be out of two fifteen. It would have to be out of two fifteen. Fund two fifteen.
Okay.
Because in general fund, we, we don't necessarily have a spot for it other than we can do something in the commissioners department.
It's fund two fifteen.
Economic development. Projects and program dollars available there. It, it depends on how much we're talking about too. I know there's been different numbers. We'll get.
Yeah.
We've been asked several times, um, contribute to this. Just concerned about where we can get the money from if we were to contribute.
So the, the other spot of funding that we have is in the Community Business Development Fund, which is two thirty-two. That is discretionary dollars for the commissioners. Mostly we use it as loan dollars, but we have used it as grant dollars in the past too. So, uh, that pot of money only gets replenished when people pay back their loans. If you use this grant dollars, it doesn't, you know, it goes away.
Right.
So there's a few options there. And I don't know if we're going to get ourselves into an ongoing support here and if so, then two fifteen is probably the best spot, that economic development.
And see, one of the things that they had kind of talked to us about was the fact that they were going to, they were going to need something more permanent, but they, they wanted a contribution right now. The question is, will Clamath be able to contribute the same next year as they can contribute at this time? Is the hospital going to be able to contribute to keep it going? They do need a more stable source of funding. And, and so I'm wondering, you know, with a, with a grant, one-time grant, maybe something like that would be more feasible if they had a business plan where they could.
So I've never, I've always been on kind of the edge of the senior center funding. And I, I've tried to understand, you know, a small piece of it from a county perspective. I know they get dollars on, they call it the triple A, the area agency on aging. Is that correct? And it's per capita. Uh, we do have community members that are part of that board. So I'm assuming that board is the one that's reaching out for health.
No.
No.
I would ask that board for their opinion then. There is a, there is a combined Lake and Clamath County Board that helps with that area.
We have a triple A, um, person in the senior center. They have an office over there.
That's interesting.
Because this, because this, this program that I, if, and again, I, I have very limited information, but I think what they're asking for is a kind of a patient navigator for seniors if they're seeking medical care. Is that correct?
Yeah, someone with right of attorney that can handle a lot of the things that, you know, a person can't when they start getting to that stage in their life where they, they can't travel, they can't handle a lot of the bills and they can't do those things and there's no family around to help them. So you would have a guardian essentially that would come in.
Anyone with additional needs, I don't know, for agents or any factor. There are a lot of.
Don't have any family.
So it seems like those, the senior center or, you know, that, that group and the health district would want to support.
They are.
And so they're the ones that are reaching out for the funding and they feel like they don't have the funding to have this position specific.
We haven't heard from A A A.
I, well, I think her last name, so, um, is it Kathy Southern? Is maybe a person in the office?
Correct.
She asked me if we were going to contribute. I said, you guys are working on it. So she knows about it. Yeah, but she thinks it's a great program for us to sponsor. I don't know if they're contributing any money. I haven't heard that they have.
They also may be looking for other grants and other opportunities and having buy-in from the county commissioners might potentially help with their grant process.
Right, so in a, interesting, uh, dynamic with the players, you know, just the.
And it's Clamath and Lake County.
Yeah, Clamath and Lake. Now, I guess when I was talking to Kristi Albertson, it did sound like, um, they did have some positive bills passed through this last legislative session where they were going to have more guardians, but they were going to do it regionally. And Lake County and Clamath, along with a bunch of other counties, are in a big, large region where you have like one guardian, basically. But Clamath and Lake kind of want to do their own thing because you're capped at how many cases you can have. I think it's like twenty-one cases, that's it. But if you have one person that can only have twenty-one cases over that, an area that includes, say, Deschutes County and Crook and Harvey and everyone else, it's kind of, it's a pretty heavy caseload. And, um, so Clamath and Lake were wanting to do something together and that's why the hospital and, uh, I guess Sky Lakes as well, put in, along with the Clamath County Board Commissioners. And now they are looking to see what we're willing to put in. Question is, where do we pull those dollars and how much can we spare?
Yes.
That's it.
So I'm, I'm kind of curious. It sounds like the health district could be the one that makes these referrals. And what, what, what do they think their caseload would be for Lake? Well, and their, their knowledge is only the south end of Lake County. What is our north end of Lake County? What resource do you think we would have from that?
Correct.
Um, I, so twenty-one, I, it sounds like a lot for Lake County, but without the information, I don't know what that means.
Well, that, you know, like twenty-one, they want a position of a split between Lake and Clamath.
So we're, if, you know, we have on average ten people that require these services.
Basically, yeah. We don't know. I think, you know, probably half a dozen, I mean, is what I was kind of being led to believe.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, you know, obviously I can see where it would be a beneficial service to provide both, um, those agencies and that's. I do not recommend watching that movie on Carollo.
No, I'm not going to watch that.
Did you like it? It brings guardianship to a whole new level. And I would, I would say if we're going to find ourselves in an ongoing contractual relationship with either the health district, the senior center, both health districts, whatever that case is, then it's easier to track that contractual obligation in fund two fifteen. If it's a one-time grant to get the program up and running, we have a flexibility both two fifteen, two thirty-two, or the commissioner department as well.
Okay.
Keep that in mind.
Maybe we should reach back out to Kristi Albertson and see if, you know, maybe get a better understanding of does she, is, are, is it going, are they really wanting the one-time thing or is this really going to be looked at annually? That'd be my question.
And I, right now.
It feels like an annual, but.
Yeah, it does kind of.
That's what they're hoping for.
And, you know, and, and right now, it's really, there's obviously a significant chunk of money related to COVID. So are we seeing a lot of, you know, guardian-type cases that are mitigating the COVID negative impacts? And if so, please let's use those dollars, you know? And those are available both through public health, health district and the county. So if we can make any kind of link to people seeking medical care, medical help, medical assistance because of any kind of COVID impact, then those dollars could be used. Um, on, on that note, now that we understand what the state is funding, we probably need to have another, well, have a first brainstorming session on how we want to start allocating our dollars. I actually think I have to do a first report here by the end of July. We haven't used any as of the end of June. So that report will be, as far as the big chunk of ARCA money that came directly to the county.
So do you want to do that at our next, at our next meeting? Or do you want to have a designated commissioner?
Our next meeting's in August.
Oh, is it?
Third and fourth.
Oh, you're right.
And that's okay, you know, we have time to spend these dollars. I can't, you know, it, we have quite a bit of time. So I think the more information we can gather, the more we think about it, the better it will be. Um, so, you know, we talked about pulling together a committee. I don't know if we still want to do that or just want to move ahead with some ideas that we can come up with on.
Good.
Okay?
Right.
All right.
So Melanie, if we could put that on, uh, August third, fourth, or one of those days, that'd be awesome.
Maybe it'd be a work session, probably, if I'm not.
Yeah, work session. Sounds good. Thank you, Anne. Uh, all right, uh, moving back, proposed, uh, proposal to utilize Title III funding in Lake County.
So are we tableing this?
Oh, excuse me. Um.
Do we need a motion now or do we need, uh?
There's an action ratification on here, but I'm not sure what we're ratifying. Does we have a made a contribution yet?
So I listened to your tape and you guys discussed five thousand dollars out of two fifteen. I didn't know, you, you never took action on it though. You just kind of left it hanging, so that's why I put it on the agenda.
Yeah, absolutely.
I can put it on the next agenda too, if you guys don't feel comfortable.
Can we make the motion tomorrow? More session.
Yeah, we can do something like that.
That gives us one more chance to just do that preview in two fifteen and, uh, take that final discussion with Christine. This is ongoing or, or one time? I'm pretty sure it's ongoing.
Okay.
But, uh, if you, if you really want to, otherwise we can do it right now.
Well, if it's ongoing, you know, the same way that Daphne is, we can decide next year whether or not we want to do it then too. If something else comes about, we're, we're able to secure some additional funding. So it doesn't lock us into a yearly thing, but.
You know, commissioners too, if we're gonna give five grand to youth mentor, maybe it makes sense to give five grand inhering our numbers for the seniors for this guardian too. It's consistent anyway.
Yeah. So.
I agree.
Okay.
You want to do that now then? Get it over with? Or do you want?
Yeah, I'll do that.
So I'll make a motion to, uh, support the guardian program for South Central Oregon, or Lake and Clamath County.
Yeah, Clamath, Lake, yeah.
Uh, contribution from Lake County in the amount of five thousand dollars coming from fund two one five.
Okay, motion. What is that?
Thank you.
Okay, motion in the second. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, my motion carries. Um. Alright, so. We won't have that on tomorrow's agenda then, perfect. So proposal to utilize uh, Title III funding in Lake County. Um, was this on uh, HEPA filters?
Yeah.
Or, no, what was this again?
You, no, this is for website design.
Oh, no, this was on the website. Yeah.
So that we have future one-stop shopping for air quality.
Yes.
And. It's appropriate uh, project Title III.
Yes.
Something off the ground. Again, remember uh. This is kind of a, many agencies coming together and working. Uh, as well as the county and the town. So that we can one-stop shop one website for the public to see what our quality is. Things like that. Uh, we did mention in the meeting when they came to brief us last time, that uh. In the future, if there's maintenance dollars involved, maybe the other agencies can step up. But this was a pretty nice contribution from the county to help get the website uh, up and running.
Yep. Okay. Alright, um. It's on our.
I have a, I have a question, Chair.
Sure.
So can we use those Title III dollars to buy HEPA filters for people in Summer Lake and Paisland?
Actually, uh, Mark, uh, that's coming up here, uh, we're. We, we just bought today a hundred and fifty HEPA filters. And uh, we're going half with the Town of Lakeview. And we're gonna use some of our COVID money to help cover that.
Okay.
So I think that'll be a really good deal. We got uh, the good deal that we, that Autumn Mirror and the, uh, with the CPR grant. That we got from the D, DEQ. CRP, excuse me, Community Response Plan. Grant, money, DEQ. So, okay, pretty pleased about it. And the town is pleased as well, as well, so. Cool. When we get that, then we'll start talking about distribution and try to get it up north as well. So that all those towns can have a shot at getting some filters. That works.
Come on that.
Very, alright. So what is the actual sum on this then, for our, this is sixteen thousand six hundred? Is that it? The total, okay.
Remember, we asked them to, they gave us a range, and we asked them to give us the number.
Yep, and that was the number they gave us, yeah, alright. Perfect. Um, alright, with that, I'll uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion to uh. Use Title III dollars to support of the development of a website. In conjunction with the Skafunk agencies and Town of Lakeview. In the amount of sixteen thousand six hundred dollars. In, in support of air quality for Lake County.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded, uh. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Alright.
Aye, motion carries as stated. Um. Thank you for really working on that, um. Next up, uh, appoint a SCOAC board member. Um. So. If I have some discussion, I guess I'm who, who wants to be on SCOAC board, I know Barry, you kind of mentioned you had some interest in that.
Yeah, you know, this was uh, I, I thought I was on it, but apparently we have to appoint it, um. This is a liaison position that I inherited when I came into the position, but uh. You know, certainly could be up for discussion now, but I would be uh, good to take on that position if you guys see that on the right tip for that.
Make a vote to appoint Barry as a SCOAC member.
Second. Um, with that, uh, motion's been made and seconded for Commissioner Schulenberger to be the SCOAC board member, as representing Lake County. Um. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, so I appreciate your vote for yourself there, so it's like, does he know on it, alright.
No, it's fine.
Perfect. Um. So next up, Fourth Amendment to the O H A agreement, none of the fun stuff, right? Okay. This one is for six thousand. Dollars in addition to. This is uh, mental health, um, problem gambling services.
For Aiden Assist.
Aiden Assist? How does that work exactly, the Aiden Assist, is this with uh, Francine's?
No, that's prevention. So like, they will, from my understanding of their operation, um. If there is someone that they need to go and help immediately, they're responsible.
Okay. So it's like uh.
First.
Their mobile crisis kind of stuff, Aiden Assist, okay.
I think that's how they use it.
It's difficult to read these reports when they, they, when they send them to us, it just. The, it's like a, comes through like on a typewriter.
So just to be clear, six thousand dollars is coming out of?
I think it's positive.
Positive, it's going into our accounts.
It should, yeah, it looks like it's an addition.
Yes, and additional.
Okay. So, alright, sounds good. Alright, we'll act on that tomorrow. If anyone has any questions, obviously, feel free to reach out to Dr. Wonser. Um. So. I was just reading this. Um. Last item, uh, just, I wrote it down as a note, now that we're pretty much done with our. Normal agenda, do we want to have an ARPA committee, or, or not ARPA, but a, a, a committee for figuring out where we're gonna spend some of these other dollars? So that we don't have to do it necessarily in the meeting, but have says a commission or per se, and sit down and have some of that discussion. Not limited to time.
Yeah, we've had uh, that discussion earlier, but then we determined that we weren't uh, ready to have those discussions yet.
Do you think we're there now?
Sounds like uh, sounds like uh, from Treasurer Cromeran that uh, we're there. And, other than the governor still hasn't signed it, but we can assume that uh, the numbers are pretty close.
Yeah.
I think one of the things we struggled with is, is who. And uh, we've probably uh, could brainstorm on that a little bit. Try to figure out the who for that committee.
Can, can we talk about that when we have our sit-down discussing the funds on August third?
On August third? On August third?
I didn't hear you.
On August third?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. Yeah, that's fine with me, I just wanted to make sure that we were.
I have to get our uh. You know, I guess we can look at our previous list of who we were thinking about too, do you happen to know that?
I have it written down somewhere.
Yeah.
Um.
I think. I guess I, you know, we definitely wanna keep it simple. Be, be nice to have somebody with a broad perspective. Not uh, folks uh, looking for one particular item or something like that, that would. That would be to advantage to us.
Yeah.
Looking for all Lake County.
Right.
I know that's hard to do, but there are maybe such people out there.
Uh, that's why we try and get as many people as we can on some of these sometimes, because it's, it's hard for people not to be biased towards, you know, the scope that they have, and it's. Eight thousand square miles and a whole lot going on sometimes that we gotta consider.
Yeah.
We miss things, and we, we miss things before or not. Okay. So um. Just as liaison to some of the EMS stuff, I was wondering, did you get the email from Francine? Uh, not Francie, sorry, from Stacy about uh, EMS wanting to be on our agenda? So, did we have that on tomorrow's, or?
No.
No.
Would you like to talk offline about it?
Yeah, sure, I, I was just kind of curious what. What was gonna take place with that, because I was just reading those emails, so.
What are you talking about?
It's with the, the EMS taxing district being formed, and we did get some of that, those applications back, and so. There's a bit of a time crunch in order to get it on their November ballot. And so, anyway. Potentially, I don't know what the next step is for us and what our timeframe is, what I asked Stacy was. If we were limited on a time, on when we had to respond. But, we can discuss that later and try and see if we, we may end up with an addition on tomorrow's agenda, I don't know. But we've got four hearings tomorrow, and uh. Some additional public comment, I imagine, so, anyway. With that, I know there's nothing else on the agenda, uh, Commissioner Albertson, do you have anything, we'll go into liaison updates.
Yeah, um. First of all, I wanna thank everybody for busting their tails the last couple of weeks, I know it's been hard on. Everyone, the firefighters and our, our county staff. And so I wanted to publicly thank everybody, including you two commissioners also. Um, also, I was updated this morning, we'll have another fuel load. Delivered into the airport, so that takes a load off my shoulders, um. And so, I think that's about all I had for you guys, so.
So Commissioner Albertson, do you feel like we're getting back into a consistent load for the airport this time? I know we've got quite a plethora of the aviation resources out there supporting the Blue Lake Fire. Is that something we're gonna have to fight for every, every truckload, or do we have a consistent plan now?
Well, to be totally honest with you, I. I think it's something that we're gonna battle for a little bit until we. Take care of some of this business.
Okay.
It's. I don't know, I just, I don't, I don't feel like I'm real. Confident that we're on a regular schedule with them. I know that they, they took some heat from Congressman Benson's office, and they, I mean. The providers of the fuel, um, and. They took some heat on the media a little bit, but. I don't know, I'm not real confident with. Where we're at with them solid, so.
Well, just cause, give me a.
I, I think we're gonna have to deal with. In the next couple of weeks, it's, it's nothing we can do about it right now, because we're contractly, contractly obligated to them. Until, um. This is over with virtually, so we have to give them a ninety-day deal with one out, and so.
Okay.
We can get fuel other places, I got that all set up. We can get it at um, in Clamath Falls if we need it in emergency. Um, the margins just aren't as good when we do that, but. We can get the fuel now, so. Um. In an emergency, we can get it from another place. So.
Appreciate your efforts on that as well.
Yeah.
You taking the lead on that, yeah. Help get that uh, ball rolling to where we can get that fuel back at our Lake County Airport. Appreciate it.
And, and I'll update you every time, we're gonna be getting a load. Just so, it takes away off our shoulders, so.
Good deal. Alright, um, Commissioner Schulenberger, you got some updates?
Yeah, I got quite a few, um, just thought I'd bring them up. Just so the public knows, you know, you guys know, we're. Every day, we're in cooperator meetings, uh, listening to the incident management teams that are fighting the Blue Lake Fire.
Yep.
And the log fire, and getting regular updates, uh, we're actively involved, listening to planning meetings. Um, also, uh, heavily involved in uh, supporting uh. Our OEM, Daniel Tag, and the evacuation plan, and making sure that uh, all Lake County is being supported. By the incident management team, so that we can uh, accurately and efficiently. Get information out to the public as far as evacuation notices, and that's been a really good uh, uh, learning experience so far. Melanie knows a little bit more about that, because she's been very actively involved helping out as well. And it sounds like uh, we, the company that helps us with our alert system, if you wanna just kind of mention that a little bit, Melanie. About how they're gonna bring us up in a bigger group setting.
So Everbridge, the company that is contracted with the state of Oregon for OR Alert. Um, is going to use Lake County as a success story at the Friday Governments Committee. So that's exciting. Because we went from, I think about two hours, down to about ten minutes to get our backs out and plotted, so we've got it down. We feel very confident.
And the good part about it now is the alerts aren't going out to all the county. Uh, it's, it's narrowed down to those particular areas and who are within those, uh, cell rangeries, so.
That's perfect, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, great work on that, and, um, just to publicly share. The reason why they got all those alerts one right after another to begin with is because. That it only allowed ninety characters on the message, and so we couldn't combine everything. Um, and so I just wanted to bring that up to make sure the public knew, that's why they got those earlier.
Yeah, good point.
Good work on that, Mel, Melanie.
Yeah, so today's I R shows the Blue Lake Fire at three hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-two acres. Uh, Blue Lake and Log Fire burned together. Uh. The O D F team worked on the south end, the fire has had a really good success here the last two days on Forest Road thirty-four. Tying it back into the Watson Creek Fire, and then uh, P N W two on the north end is working very hard, near government Harvey. And Forest Road twenty-nine oh one, and Second Marsh, and the Long Bell area, trying to get that contained on the head of the fire. Conditions have been horrible, and uh, ninety degrees, less than ten percent R H. Twenty-five to thirty mile an hour gusts, and you're at the head of the fire trying to get it stopped, so. Commend them for keeping it up on top of the rim, but uh, that, that battle's not over.
Nope.
And uh. We'll, we'll monitor that. Uh, did talk with uh. Larry Holzgang with Business Oregon yesterday, uh, as you all recall, uh, last year with Oregon wildfires. They did have wildfire recovery dollars uh, from twenty twenty. Uh, there is a version of that in the twenty twenty-one uh. Legislation, it just isn't signed yet by the governor. So if we uh, come across uh. A business or businesses that uh, are in need of. Wildfire recovery dollars for, and meet the criteria, just wanted you guys to know that that is a possibility out there through Business Oregon. Totally different subject, uh, had a broadband meeting yesterday with, uh, SCOED, uh, Commissioner DeGroot, Clanton County, myself and, uh, a few others that are on that committee. Looks like what we have found out, um, visiting with the folks, uh, and that Lebo was also on the call with, uh, the state that we would be stronger, uh, going together as the two counties versus one. So, uh, looks like there's a good chance we're gonna put out an RFP here pretty soon uh, to get a business or whatever to kind of help us with a master plan.
Master plan of the broadband.
View, Clanton and Lake County.
Good.
And, uh, that, that will develop along as we, as we speak. We did find out other counties are well ahead of us, uh, we thought we were ahead of the game, but we're actually behind. So we need to do some catch up, get those master plans. You know, get, uh, figure out what all we have, we do, both counties have a different, uh, arrangement of of broadband, uh, but, uh, getting that master plan together would be great, so. RFPs will be in the future. Any questions on that?
Do we have a time frame, maybe, on the RFP and when we can actually go out?
Well, Betty Riley, you guys you know, is, uh, this is her last month work. And she is furiously working, uh, trying to have that happen.
Before she leaves, before she leaves.
So she'll at least get it out, she might not be on the, uh, deciding end of it or, you know.
Okay.
So I expect that out by the end. Want folks to know that the county applied for a, uh, federal grant, again, for the railroad. It's called a RACE grant, a very difficult grant to, uh, get a application in that, uh, will get you very far. Uh, it's very technical and complicated, uh, it was in the amount of, uh, twenty million dollars. What this will do, as we all know, the Christie Grant got us started. And, uh, what was that, about ten million dollars, uh, for phase one? What this, this, uh, RACE grant will do then will help us with phases two through five. And so our application is in, we don't know how many people applied. The state of Oregon is allocated twenty five million for the state. And anyway, we will see, but, uh, you can't get it if you don't apply, so.
Absolutely.
I know the railroad folks, uh, really came through, David Anzer in his, uh, business, uh, work there. Doing a lot of the calculations and whatnot, came through big time on that. And then also our contractor that helps us free grants, Sharon Leyte did an excellent job as well, so.
Yeah, Sharon's a rock star. It's awesome.
And Cromeride did some great work, everybody, everybody pitched in there, so, good work on that.
Did, um, and, and another part of that, I just, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but even if we don't get it this year, it puts us in a good place to reapply next year.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it definitely, it's got its, uh, uh, good application that. One, one point there is, uh, we didn't put any match money, so folks just need to know that. We had zero match dollars on that.
So we had lots of support letters and everything else, they were really good.
Including a letter from Clanton County Commissioner's support.
Yeah.
That was neat to see our, our neighboring county support us for that. Next subject, uh, we did put in a letter of support, uh, supporting, uh, fuels reduction work in the south corners. Three of us, uh, wrote that letter and, uh, definitely, uh, wanna support further, uh, fuels reduction projects. Uh, both commercially, pre-commercially, and then with prescribed fire. We can see the impacts of Blue Lake Fire, we certainly don't wanna see that happening in the one rounds.
Alright.
We've already had a fuels reduction project in the north corners, south corners is their next place to go, so. Want folks to know we did that. And then, uh, as some folks may know, uh, Senator Wyden, Senator Merkley have proposed a River Democracy Act. We did write a letter in opposition to the River Democracy Act. That would, uh, impact about a hundred and fif- over a hundred and fifty miles of stream river in Lake County.
Yeah.
Designating it either as wild, scenic, or recreational. Another example is, uh, creating a half mile buffer where on each side of the stream or river where, uh, would be have restricted access and restricted, uh, activity where you couldn't reduce fuels, things like that, uh, we feel that it is very negative and would be very harmful for, uh, federal lands and anything that is next to private land. Would obviously cause a threat to that for wildfire, so we will be sending that letter off as soon as we clarify where we sent that letter.
Have you heard, just on that same subject, have you heard from, uh, Senator Wyden's office at all on this whole thing?
No, have not, uh, other than early on in the process, you know, saying that they will modify the the proposal, but yet we've still seen, yet to see any modification. I know it's been talked about, uh, you know, in DC, they've had the sessions, a session.
Okay.
We mentioned the HEPA filters, so I think that's don't need to recover that, cover that again. And then, uh, Mark, you probably know this, we all know this, uh, the code enforcement job, officer job is out on the streets. Uh, went out last Friday and will be open through August sixth for all of Lake County, so we're looking forward to seeing, uh, allocations come in on that.
That, that's awesome, it's been a long, hard road to get in, so.
Yeah. I also, uh, no, that's, that's all I have this time.
Okay.
Commissioner Albertson, do you have anything else?
I do not. Thank you guys.
Okay, um, I just wanna just touch on one thing. Yesterday, Summer Lake got moved, or at least my, my house and my community got moved to a level two. A good portion of the Sil- Summer Lake Basin was moved to a level three. In light of the fire making a little bit more of a push on the two nine oh one road. And, um, there was a call that was put out for assistance from, um, for the Wildland folks. For the local High Desert Range. And you know, we've, we've noticed for a little while that, uh, the responses that we've had within our High Desert Range land, which is all volunteer, has been, you know, the same people. Same small group that respond to everything, but when this call went out, it was like, hey, we need you. Everybody showed up. And not only that, but, uh, our local fire departments from every part of the county. Uh, Lakeview, Westside, Christmas Valley, Paisley, Silver Lake, everyone was there. We had a good thirty guys with a lot of apparatus and the, uh, Division Supervisor, he got there and he was so stunned. He's like, I am taking a picture of this, this is incredible, and he was just overwhelmed. And I, I wanna mention that because I wanna say thank you to all those other volunteers out there and everyone that showed up because it made a lot of it hit me pretty hard, um, being that I live there. For the most part, you know, I'm standing there with a lot of my neighbors and we're doing this just about every year now, and, uh, you know, we, we joke around and we say, hey, gosh, we oughta, it's like a reunion, you know? Time we get to see each other. But, uh, when everyone else showed up from all the different communities, it really made a difference and I just really appreciate the unity of this county, county and how everyone came together and we were ready to to jump up there on the builder lines and everything else that we spent time putting in and, uh, defend the community and, and help our structure teams out. And so I just wanted to point that out, I didn't want it to go unnoticed, we were stood down at the end, which was a good thing. But like Commissioner Schulenberger said, the battle's not over yet. That is not over, we'll probably be back out there tonight, um, with that evening wind that pushes the fire downhill. But, um, you know, we just hope for the best and I know they're doing a fantastic job up there to cruise up on a hill and in the, in the woods. Done a huge amount of, of, uh, uh, fuels reduction on the two nine oh one road, um, it's impressive. And, uh, and the twenty eight, but, um, anyway, just wanted to point that out, say how much I appreciate it.
And Commissioner, I actually, uh, saw a photo of that on the Medford News this morning.
Really?
Uh, it, it got out, so.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Well, that's good.
Must have been through social media.
Yeah.
They, they definitely, uh, commented on the RFPA High Desert, uh, was committed and all the local folks volunteering.
Yeah, good deal. Alright, well, that's all I have. Appreciate you being on, Commissioner Albertson, so.
Glad to have you, and I'm glad you let me, let me join you. I, I seen, uh, the pictures last night also, it was pretty, pretty moving.
Yeah. So, um, maybe we'll, uh, I'll talk with Melanie offline and maybe we'll discuss having you on tomorrow. We're not, I'm not sure we'll keep you on tomorrow, but. Alright, we'll let you guys go. Thank you so much. We'll adjourn the meeting, it is, uh, uh, ten thirty two.